Chairman, you're on.
Okay, we'll get the meeting started. Uh, the agenda tonight is a pool of agenda and public comments for the non-agenda items. Pool of minutes. Bylaw revisions of the amendments to our procedural sections. Work on joint ordinance amendments included. Timehouse Corner District. Discussion of action. Option of recommended changes and also gateway discussion. Discuss proposed uses and design changes, extensions. If I have any questions. So, I'd like to do a start with the roll call.
Wow, cool.
Marty Gang.
Jamie Ladd.
John Decker.
Roger Moore.
Tom McGinn.
Ted LeBlanc.
Okay, so we'd like to first have a pool of the agenda items. Like we mentioned, the pool of agenda is published. Question in your favor? Proposed? Around time. If, um, not sure this is currently open to public comment for any other items that might want to be discussed. Everybody's here probably for this on the general ready. Okay, we will move on to the minutes. We have twelve of us. July twenty-fourth.
Move to a pool of agenda.
Okay, well, second act. Discussion of favor? And opposed?
Yes, I understand.
Well, I'm sorry, Tim.
Sorry.
And, um, I abstained also, I wouldn't. So, uh, for favor, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so we move on to bylaw revisions. And, um, yeah. Do you have a few weeks' time needed to know?
A few minutes ago, Anne sent you a copy and you said that you had another copy last night. The same one, so it should happen.
This is the final revision.
That's the final revision.
Okay, just something with question after all, just a couple of minutes.
We didn't hear you there.
Yeah.
Well, what's next?
So, it's. But can you look at it or? It's. Just make sure. Chuck, do you have today?
No.
Do you have a copy?
No, I didn't make my copies. Do many copies last time.
Mostly just to make sure what we wanted to change last time is actually approved. Is she something, John?
Uh, I'm just probably looking at the section six of agenda and public notification. So, I'm not sure that three business days is sufficient and seventy-two hours is sufficient. I know that we haven't discussed our previous system. I'd like to bring up new topics, but that's just probably what we have.
Three business days, Mr. Chairman, is the standard for ten. Okay, this is three business days.
All right. All right, so.
If the board wants to make it there as long, there's somewhere to work to do that. It's just that that's what we have as a policy. Have all of these, unless some of these are more than two days.
The reason that I'm questioning that is when we have especially topics of interest and people make plans, and it would be nice to have the legal plans. As far as agenda and posting, well, if you have the agenda prepared, it should be posted pretty much the same time. But again, I'm hesitant to bring up new topics because we have to get this passed.
I think since it's in the charter and it's set down for the meeting, I agree with you.
Something that's been forth on this for many years, two days. It's always been three days, probably.
Right. But, well, three days is okay. We haven't had it actually three days, but it would be nicer, in my opinion, to have it have more advanced notice in three days. We always seem to be doing things last minute.
Yep. Well, was it worth the one of the motion?
No, I don't think the board is interested at this point, so I don't see much support.
Is this something I was supposed to be involved in? Because I can't hear you.
No, you can't hear? Okay.
Well, there were some whispers going on, but if you're talking about when the agenda came out and the information, if you want public opinion, it's pretty bad. You get an agenda and the information that was discussed two weeks prior, one day before.
Well, we're talking about the bylaws right now.
Oh, bylaws, okay.
Require a certain amount of lead time.
Exactly, and if it's three days, then only this last agenda came out twenty-four hours beforehand. So, um, it should, I mean, honestly, it should be at least a week before.
Well, we moved this along, I think we made more few weeks of the bylaws. Second over there? Second?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Uh, yeah, discussion. I think in the future, we should come back after accepting this and see if the overall consensus of this map.
Just to move this along, because we've been sitting at this since two point six. Yeah, so we can move it along and then we can always.
That's what I'm saying. But it's safe.
Good point. Okay, so the motion is to prove it as, as nice in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we move on to Timehouse Corner District. The last meeting we had was the timehouse corner.
Yep.
So, we're gonna go through each of the, um, different items or? Yes. Different minutes, Chairman.
Go ahead.
Wait, and those of you who are in attendance at the twenty-fourth meeting will remember that that was a public workshop and you've seen a lot of input in public on the Townhouse Corner. Uh, we heard a lot of things we hadn't heard before. Um, there was a lot of concern that had been expressed in a variety of different things, and what we did was staff went through and looked at the, basically the same thing that was on the, uh, in the minutes that you reviewed. And made proposed changes for you to start examining, to take a look at. There were some, several that were of great question. I think, I think there was a number of items that were not well received, several uses that were not well received. There was concern from residents and the butters about some of the uses and the intensity of uses. There was a question made about what constitutes small and large in terms of square footage. And there was also a number of concerns about, about proximity of, uh, uses to existing residential, uh, uses in the area. And of course, the, the board also heard testimony, of course, as soon as I'm about to reference it, heard testimony about the, uh, concern that was brought up about the new district expansion. Thank you. There we go. If you recall, um, one of the concerns, one of the things the board had done after the May twenty-second, public hearing on the ordinance, this particular ordinance, was that the, uh, the board had considered requests from existing property owners of the John Clough Lane area. Originally, this was, uh, this project, this area was proposed to terminate at John Clough Lane. The board heard testimony at that public hearing that there being two, two uses existing, one here and one here. Uh, these are existing contractor storage yards. This is a lot that was, that has been made a legal lot of record, is a legal lot of private, but has access to John Clough Lane by private way exemption. And therefore, you had basically three lots here, two that had existing uses and one, a third that had potential use. Uh, that wanted to be included in the Townhouse Corner District. The board heard that and then had proposed adding them to this, uh, district. You'll see them in the brown there. Um, at the meeting of the twenty-fifth, there was some pushback on that, and the board had proposed to take those out, if you recall, that those would be eliminated because, A, that the Townhouse Corner District, uh, was for smaller uses and there was a concern that some larger, uh, low-impact manufacturing uses could go in there. And second of all, because those are contractor storage yards, and when the ordinance is passed, you'll probably all recall with, with glee, the contractor's storage yard ordinance or provisions that we went through, I think it was four months, hammering out. Those are, those will be implemented in the, uh, in the new zoning ordinance. They're just waiting to, uh, to come on board. Uh, and that would cover those, those existing businesses right now. So, given those, those, um, circumstances, the board elected to propose eliminating that brown area and return back to the original boundaries of the proposed Townhouse Corner District as indicated in the, uh, the blue here. So, that's just a reminder of that particular, um, thing. There's another, uh, couple of things that we needed to do. And let me just get to it. And that was the, the question that was asked, and it was asked really by the Comprehensive Planning Committee members and by a number of citizens was, what do we, what do we mean by small scale? Because if you recall, the, uh, um, original language that had been approved by the town called for small-scale, um, projects. And. So, the question was, can we, uh, minutes, there we go, thank you. Can't do two things at the same time, that's wrong. Okay, this is what we wanted to get to. The question was, what's small, what's existing? What are we proposed, proposed to do out there in, as far as new businesses and integrate them with the, uh, with existing built structure and built fabric that's out there? The types of uses that we have and the square footage of uses that we have. The board expressed some concern about that, and there had been the question of what, what is a small scale? What is a scaled commercial operation that would fit into the existing, uh, district? And so, what staff did is they went through all of the, the cards, the assessor's cards, to take a look at all of the existing uses. And this is a, basically, inventory of all the uses in the proposed district excluding, uh, those lots on the John Clough Road. Um, and as you can see, the majority of the uses there currently are single-family and two-family, and we have one four, uh, four-unit, um, apartment complex in there. That's behind you on the Rundle Range, that's right here. Uh, if you take just basically simple mean calculation, we have the average building's square footage in the district of all those, those buildings excluding outbuildings. These are all principal structures. The average building's square footage in the district is two thousand and forty-two square feet. That's, you know, standard deviations are pretty significant. We've got some large buildings here, uh, the Grange and Forefathers, which kind of skew it up. Um, but that's, that's our average square footage in the building district. Our average commercial building's square footage is about four hundred and forty, uh, four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two, eighty-three, uh, square feet. Again, uh, it ranges everything from seven thousand to forefathers to the Sinclair property, which is twelve hundred and sixty square feet. Um, our average residential's, say pardon?
Do you have copies of that or can you expand that so that we can?
Can't say that?
I have no idea what. I can't see it from front or either, no.
Well, okay.
You got any copies?
Do have some. Can help, can you read that?
Yeah.
Do I have a public?
Basically, this is all of the properties that are involved.
All the properties.
And what their existing uses are.
The square, well, it's just, it's not, uses for single-family and, well, if you could share, folks, that would help. They, it's a fling there, isn't it?
So, Leonard Van Gasspeck signed, just a sign on his house?
What? He's got the law.
The lot there?
Yep. Give us the board.
David Gasspeck, so you have that listed as a single-family?
You'll notice there are a number of properties in here that are undeveloped, that are within the district. I think there's three, maybe four properties that are not developed. Um, they consist of two acres, about two acres average. So, this gives us an idea, you know, we, we heard a lot of things going back and forth at the meeting about, um, that it's all residential, that it's all commercial, that it's large buildings and small buildings. So, this is, this is an attempt just to get us back to dealing with pretty much the, the facts of the situation. We have a lot of small buildings, we have some small, single-family homes, we have some, uh, mobile homes, we have some large, single-family homes, two-family homes, we have a four-family dormitory, four-unit dormitory that used to be the dormitory for, uh, the, uh, school, Land School. That's a squatted apartment, they just changed that a couple of years ago.
Adam, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can, I have some paperwork that goes along with this. Am I able to pass that out?
Uh, you'll have to ask the chairman on that one. Is it something that, that we already have here or?
Nope, it's a list of the existing businesses that are in the twenty-six lots that are available.
Shows a lot. Yep, yeah.
Is that right?
Sure, you could have a copy, sure. Thank you. Michael Pruckers B and B.
That's what the desk are asking me when they come for directions for it. On the internet, it's listed as a lot.
Whoops. Okay, we don't have it listed as a bed and breakfast, um, right now, to be honest with you. It's listed as residential. So, we'll have to.
And then there is a use.
It's been there as residential use. There's no license, there's no, this is a, indeed.
They have a nice sign out for one of the farms.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, well, um, yes, that, they had, originally they had approached us about putting an art gallery there, which is why artists and classmates is there too. So, yeah, this isn't too different, although, uh, the Van Gasspeck, uh, property is listed as residential. Or at least Beth has it listed as residential.
Doesn't take into account the ones that have lost their commercial zoning? Like Gonville, that was at one point a commercial.
Yeah.
We lost it.
Well, he discontinued, correct? He stopped, stopped doing the business there, right?
Well, as.
They did, they did find something to replace it, within two years, so we lost it.
Lost it. Question along this line?
Yeah.
Question along this line, where are we listing? The, uh, Time Water Switching Station, which is right there at Van Gasspeck's? That is a business, or it's public facilities, whatever you want to call it.
It must have an easement because it's not listed as a lot.
Huh?
It must have an easement because it's not listed on the lot. So, be an easement like it has, like the switching station down off of Limerick Road has and also several of the, uh, towers don't have specific lots that are easements.
Well, one reason I'm mentioning that is because when that was put in, it never even came to play. And you just put in.
Yeah, so another, um, yeah, it's not listed on, it's, let's put it this way. It's not listed on the assessor's records. Probably wouldn't be because what happens with you, with utilities, um, unless you've got, own a piece of land like CMP does, um, what they do is they send you a, uh, summary of all of their infrastructure they have within your town. It's taxed as a unit. Just like all the power lines are taxed as one unit. All the power lines along, all of the roads are taxed as one unit, but they don't, they're not on the card.
No, because when this was put in, it was a dump here.
Well, up there. So.
It's definitely there.
Yeah, I, I, I trust it. So, according to this map, there are a few extra properties that are out there in use.
Details, that's still.
Yeah, it's still.
Yeah. The lock shop.
She's got it listed still as residential, so that's kind of good. Passives.
There's a few that are missing on here, actually, what about, um, Wies?
Oh, yeah, the boat, well, that was, um, oh, what are you, what are you calling the boat shop there?
I don't know, what's, which one is that? Uh, the one just before John Clough. Yeah, it'd be the Bull House, Bull House Boat Works.
Yeah.
There is quite a new boat, um, a new tenant in there that's going to be working on boats.
Definitely. Yep. I will, so we have some, some, we might have some other things to do.
There's, there's, listen to me, there's more businesses than what's, what's listed and not mentioned, the businesses that can no longer operate because of the way that, uh.
Well, they're, they're not businesses right now.
Yeah, they're, they're now considered.
How many have choice?
I can't help but tell on twenty-six lots that are using it right now.
That are, use, have businesses?
Mm-hmm.
I'll have to tell the, uh, the assessor. She's got it listed all as single-family and I looked at the cards pretty carefully. And she, and she's got it listed as, as residential. And I, and I, that's good because that further reinforces the idea of this being a mixed-use area. I think the thing that's key is that we look at, what we wanted to look at, I don't think the issue was so much that it was or wasn't used for mixed use. I think the issue was, what's the scale that we're talking about? Some of the Comprehensive Plan Committee had asked. What's a scale, a small scale that we should be looking at? And if we look at our square footage here, this gives us a better idea of what small scales should be or what compatible scale of the neighborhood should be, because that's one of the things the Complain said was that the, the businesses should be compatible with the scale and the intensity of the uses or at least the scale of the use, uh, existing residential uses. So, we're trying to fit this stuff into a residential neighborhood and make it a mixed use. And I think that's the thing the planning board was struggling the last time, because we had uses and the question was, how big should those uses be? How many square footage should those, uses should be? And, uh, we've been working with five thousand square feet, which is a fairly good-sized building. That's fifty by one hundred feet, so it's not a small building.
So, the, the square footage that's listed on it, that's the existing buildings?
That's the existing buildings, the existing principal buildings, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question along this way here on the map that we had.
Yes.
Okay. It's misleading, as far as I'm concerned, from on the Scent Road side, what actually is Kennebunkport?
Um, Kennebunkport is the part that's all the vacancy around that map.
No.
Yeah, on the map it is.
Are there houses on the Scent Road side?
Just that little cut in there. Is, is Kennebunkport, this is Kennebunkport, that little cut in there is Kennebunkport? And then down here is Kennebunkport, all the rest is around.
This is Kennebunkport.
The L shape part in there is Kennebunkport.
Right. This is Kennebunkport right here.
Which one?
That's right. Just this cutout right here.
Yeah.
That's it. We're just, right here. That's the other part, and then all of this on the outside perimeter, that's all Kennebunkport.
What about the, the, what, three in the white?
And, oh, those are.
Those are wrong.
It's around there.
I'm just, I'm just, that's all I'm just trying to inquire.
Every lot that shows in the logo.
Blank space, it's up.
The only part that's a cutout is this part here and then all, all along the perimeter is all Kennebunkport.
Well, that's where the Timehouse is.
Yeah.
That's right on that lot.
So, you, you lot that is in Kennebunkport, which is the, like the L shape right there, okay? Is that residential right now?
I don't know. I don't.
It's commercial.
Where are you talking? Where?
Yeah.
That's.
Right here.
That's free enterprise.
It's residential. I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
It's, it's free enterprise, all that, on your Rundle Road side, Kennebunkport. And down to that, it's all free enterprise, Kennebunkport.
And so you get to RH Brown and that towards Farm Forest.
What's the use in that piece right now, is it residential?
It's residential, it's been used as a residential right now.
So, this gives us an idea of, of how many businesses are out, what the proportion is, business versus residential. Well, no, I, well, Jen's does. Jen's shows you where the businesses are located. The other chart shows you exactly where, um, what size, what size.
That's what we're trying to do.
So, that shows us what, what the relative sizes are. So, and the stats are down in the lot. So, that's our average square footage for various things in this. So, our average commercial buildings are larger, um, and I should say, these are not footprints. You'll find that, for instance, um, Rundle Range is actually a three-story building. Its footprint is considerably less than its sixteen-nine under that's shown. Uh, as opposed to Forefathers, which is pretty much a one-story building, all intents and purposes. It is, it is a sprawling building, and so therefore, it's, it's, uh, square footage is most.
That's two stories. It's a second story.
There is a second story, but because it's a whole thing. I'd like to, I'd like to sort of just apologize so, so we can hear you saying. So, so what are, so what are we going to do with this? Is this, this just fire information just to get like the potential size of the building? I think the issue that came up at the last meeting is the question of scale. What size buildings are we going to have? What size uses are we going to have? That was something the planning board was struggling with. Uh, there was a lot of give and take at that, at that workshop, debating the issue of what size should we have? Is it five thousand square feet, is it three thousand square feet? What should be the size of commercial uses? What are the limitations we should have so that it stays in scale with the surrounding neighborhood? Which is the intent that was expressed by the Complain Committee when they did their work. So, um, they say small and some people want compatible. So, instead of guessing, now we've got something to work with. Our average commercial building is about forty-four hundred square feet. Our average, uh, single-family buildings is about two thousand square feet. And again, that's total square footage, it's not necessarily footprint. So, uh, but it gives us a, uh, my average building, excuse me, the average residential building is, is, is pretty small, sixteen-sixty-seven. So, that's why, one of the ways to deal with that issue when we're dealing with larger buildings is again, what we were doing in the, in the design plans of breaking it up, visually breaking it up, stepping things back, putting in jogs, in order to reduce the scale of a larger commercial building so it mimics that of the scale of these surrounding residential buildings. And so, if anything, that really reinforces that need right there, if we're going to conform to the Complain Committee. But the second thing still, I think, in the use table that was really discussing was a, was a target of a lot of firestorms, the issue of size of the buildings. Uh, you'll notice in the, in the, what I handed out to you guys also showed, um, also I attached the, uh, the definitions. You had those definitions and those were definitions we had put out, um, as part of the public hearing, the twenty-second. But I, instead of them being separated and everybody going looking through their, their notebooks looking for them, I decided to attach them at the end of the proposed ordinance changes, so you would could always refer to them very quickly and know what each one of these meant. For instance, the issue of commercial services kept coming up and there were some who were very concerned that banks would be included, you can see by the definition they are. What constitutes a low-impact manufacturing was enough. What constitutes a low-impact manufacturing was another big question. I didn't include medium-impact manufacturing because it's not relevant to this. But it's considerably more impacted, much larger than the small impact, which I believe is six thousand at this point.
Question for you. What you have given us here is square footage.
Correct.
Along the way, but what turn, along the lines of what we have seen before, or guidelines, or anything else, it doesn't tell us how big of acreage we're speaking of for these properties.
How big the acreage.
Yeah, it's turned out under the guidelines, under the zoning standards, minimum lot size or whatever else that, or one acre, or twenty thousand square feet, or anything else. So what are these lot sizes here?
Well, just because if we say, let's say, five thousand square foot per building, you're not going to put a five thousand square foot building on a half-acre lot.
Now you know that, you're not just want to play squeezy.
Well, you won't be able to play squeezy because it won't make your, you won't make your sixty percent.
Maximum walkover.
Yeah, you have maximum one. So.
Well, there's a few things I want to point out. One is, you have the average commercial building forty-four eighty-two. And a few things about that. One is if we add in some that may be listed here as commercial but may in fact be commercial uses.
Yep.
If you find they're not that large buildings, the details in, in the lock shop, they're not going to be, they'll probably bring the average down. The other thing is, really, two buildings, three buildings that really skew that, that average. So I think the number seems like it's close to five thousand, but if you took those three out, it's, it's probably going to be under two thousand.
Yeah, there's a huge standard deviation. Yeah, I didn't do the standard deviation on this.
And the other thing is, because it is mostly residential, I personally would not want to encroach too much on the residents that have been there for decades. Based on the one or two large buildings that are there now, I think any new buil-, new buildings still have to have, be able to fit in with the resident, the mixed use, but it includes residents, family members. So that's my.
Do you have questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. To us first.
I just, I'd like to, I mean, we're talking a lot of residences out of twenty-six lot, that's not mostly residential.
It's still nice, it's still mostly resident.
Okay. I, I guess I'm a bit confused. Why are we even going back and redoing this again and again and again? I mean.
If you have some residents that complain about it.
Okay. The thing about it is, is you have a lot size and your building is based on, I mean, someone's not going to come up with a five thousand square foot building on a lot that doesn't, that can't accommodate it. You have to have certain, you know, lot size to do that. It doesn't, what I don't understand is if you have standards for building something, how, I don't know, I think we're, we're just.
I know, but, but here's, here's my answer. Is this has to pass the town meeting by the res-, by all of, so we can come up with whatever we want. That, that's one thing, so we have to make it so that it's acceptable. And also, it is, it's in R four district right now.
That's R three.
R three.
So it's two acre zone.
Two acre zone, um, we've got three, that's, that's, okay. To, to, uh, mixed business use is a big change. So we want to make sure we get it right.
But I was at, I was at that meeting last, the last public forum, and I'm not quite sure where I heard that everybody wanted everything downsized.
I don't know if I'll clarify it any better for you, but the board's direction has been through the comp plan, through the economic development committee and so forth. The point that came up at the last meeting was, we don't have a definition of small scale. What the board, what, we, before there's a regulation and an ordinance, we have to meet the intent of the comp plan, which we always try to do and we work very closely with them. So what we asked was for some information so that we might be able to make a better judgment about what is the scale down there? What, how can this mix going into the future, less impact on the residents, and yet still provide all of the new business?
Okay, but I guess I'm confused, like if you have a building that's already seven thousand square feet, well, if, if, if that's not considered small scale in your eyes, whatever you set it at, five thousand square feet, six thousand square feet, what are you going to do? I mean, it's already seven thousand square.
The building's already there.
It's already there. Grandfather, we're not going to tear it down and make it, make it smaller.
Don't, don't use the word grandfather around me.
This is for, this is for the future. This is for future development of the ones that are undeveloped.
Because there's not another lot there that's big enough to accommodate seven thousand square foot lot. Or a house, or a commercial, anything.
The, the building has to be based on the size of the lot.
Lot, exactly.
There you go.
So.
Go ahead, you hand up.
The intent of the comp plan is to allow this as a mixed-use neighborhood. That implies businesses and residences cheek by jowl, which already exists. If, regardless of which set of numbers we take, we're probably looking at about a third of the existing lots already occupied by some business use. It seems to me that the two factors the board should pay the closest attention to are, one, yes, lot size, because that's going to limit the size of the building. But also, at what point, when we define small, do you get to a point where there's just no point in having businesses as, as new businesses coming in? Because you've restricted the size of the building to such a small size, and one that, I mean, nobody uses phone booths anymore. So if you take the, the greatest square footage there, which is the seven thousand, and the smallest one, which I assume is a one-story building, that one thousand, I'm sorry, twelve hundred and sixty, and just add those together, divide by two, you come up with just over four thousand square feet. And, you know, you can crunch the numbers any way you want. I have a feeling you're still going to come up with something around four thousand square feet. You know, is that an unreasonable size for that neighborhood? Assuming the lot is big enough to hold that building and sufficiently buffer it and screen it so it doesn't impact the residences.
Yeah, the, we're talking as-is, okay? And, and my concerns with the, with the district going mixed, commercial, how do we want to see this? There are, you know, let's say I have a pocket full of money. And I now want to change sale of one of these things. And I have enough money to entice all these people to hand it over. Now I have a parcel bigger than hers. I can put in a bigger building as long as law permits. This is the point about scale, all right? Yours is there, but if I want something bigger in, then I have the money to do it.
But I believe there's limitations on the side, you know, if you combine lots, there's limitations on the size of the building. Not really, I just, I found the six thousand square feet you had in there on the.
Yeah.
Right? Did I not know what you're talking about?
You might combine lots and have a bigger lot, maybe put more building in.
Well, that was half, that's three thousand square feet. If it's five thousand, you change it to six, right?
It's five thousand.
Okay. So it's five thousand. You can find as many lots as you want, it's still five thousand, right?
Five thousand is what?
Initially, you're just low-impact manufacturing, we're building not up to six five thousand.
Well, we, that, we, yeah. That number we haven't arrived to yet. Yeah.
I guess my question to the board is that I have one of the businesses down on John Coughlin, Richard. Our buildings are within those numbers already. Why did the board decide to take those out of that district? When it was proposed being put in?
I can't answer that because I wasn't here at that meeting, so I don't know if anyone else in the board would want to. No, I want you guys to answer.
I'll, I'll address this, sorry, because I'm a spade.
Okay, choose, choose a, a board, a discussion board.
Yeah, I can, I, I mean, I can answer the, I think it was already answered once tonight. You had originally come in with the request for us to go ahead and consider including at the, the back lots. We listened to you and everybody kind of agreed that, that, why not? We already have two of the businesses established. Doesn't, it's a good place to cut off, why not do it? Nobody seems to be complaining. However, at subsequent meeting, and nothing's final until we've gone through the whole thing, different members of the board and the community said, and, and residents out at the lane, once this is established, you had indicated you wanted those contractor storage yards to be able to stay. But once this regulation is approved, those three lots could be, each one of them could become a five thousand square foot building with the business and the traffic and the noise and everything else associated. So that did not seem fair to the one, even though it's only one person at the end, right now. But the other comments from the board was that it further extended into the properties more so than even our B one, that DB one, DB two, et cetera. And the board's feeling was that since your stated desire was to be able to keep those as contractor storage areas, have them in the future, we look back at what we had proposed before in the new ordinance and what will come before the town, the way the board had stuck, you'll be able to do exactly what you want. The folks at the front will have that potential impact of all of that additional. And again, it's only potential, but you may not own that property forever. So you sell it, three big businesses go in, they, they no longer have that quiet little residence at the end. So that's, that's how the board put it in, based on public comment, took it out based on public comment. And I think it was almost unanimous, and I don't remember all that. I don't remember actually deciding on it, so.
You didn't vote, but I think.
Didn't vote.
There was a, there was a general consensus.
But picking it back up for this meeting. And what guidance you gave. One question that I have for you. What is the depth of those lots projecting anywhere?
The orange ones?
Yeah. Depth.
Yeah, that was your, matter of fact, that was your comment about seeing what you're doing, you wanted me to.
Yeah, but everybody's.
Wants a scale.
No answer. I mean, I just asked for depth. All right, you had a question?
Yeah, one of the light colored ones in the back, which I was in there since nineteen eighty on a building. We've been in construction and excavation, pre-making cabinets and all kinds of stuff built on it. And where it allowed at that time as a commercial building, taken out, knocked commercial, put back in, commercial, now we're out of commercial. Why would, I, I understand what he's saying, but we've been there since the eighties, we're below the size of these other buildings. You've still got to meet your setbacks, you've still got to meet your wetlands, dry lands, everything to make the regulations fit.
So which, which properties are you, you're talking about? These are the properties, these two properties, these two existing, this, then, Richard, yours has been there for what?
Since the eighties, you say, right?
Early, eighteen eighty.
The landscaping one's been there since what, nineties, two thousand?
Uh, in the nine, late nineties.
Late nineties, that's what it was, yeah. So they've been there for a long time.
We're undersized what there is below, you're talking now, the size of buildings.
There's more square footage of buildings on the Bull House Boat Work setup than mine in, well, in Harper Bridges with what's on that lot.
That lot right there, yeah.
Which, which like.
This one.
But if, if you're talking about the, the ones all the way to the left, I mean, those few things that I think what I was saying is, it is reaching back into a full residential area back there. And, and just because you're keeping it low-key and respectful doesn't mean the next, eventually it could get sold. The next owner could put in a five thousand square foot building. And then you have it right in the backyard of the residence that are over there. So we, we just.
My five buildings, almost five, like mine is almost five, mine's five thousand square feet, no wonder five thousand. Here's a lot under, way under that couple thousand, and it's bad. I can see what you're saying, but I'm already the limit, I can't expand because I can't meet my setbacks.
And you'll be able to continue with that use, that you should know that, that what you're doing now, you'll be able to keep doing. This won't change that.
But if we try to resell it, we can resell it as a competent place, because as we call it.
Could be sold at a distinct type of use.
The bank won't look at it that way where it's not in a commercial zone.
Not a commercial zone.
Well, if, if you, two sides, I mean, Mr. Chairman. If you're, if you're designated as a contractor storage yard, which is a business, and you are in a business and a residential zone, which is what the contractor storage yard provision as a condition is, it just hasn't been implemented yet. If you're doing that, you're a business, you're designated business in a, in a residential district. Because the board recognized that this town has a lot of contractors, a lot of guys to start off business. And what the original plan was that they were supposed to be basically under, floating under the home occupation, you know, designation. Saying, well, you know, you're, you can just continue as long as you don't have any, more than three axle vehicles parked there, and your crew doesn't meet you there. Well, which means, in other words, you can, you can have it on your home, but as soon as you get your first triax of anything, or you have one guy working for you, now suddenly you've got to go buy a parcel of land on Route One. So the planning board recognized, that's not realistic, and it's not happening. So we've got to find a way to allow contractors to be able to expand their yards and have storage, protect it of the surrounding neighborhood, and ensure that there's a certain amount of equipment that they can store on there and a certain amount of traffic that they have coming out, and there's enough buffering from the neighborhood in order to allow it. It's based on acreage. So that just had, we just have an echo, and we even have the itinerary of vehicles, the list of vehicles, inventory of vehicles, we even have triaxes, lots, everything, up to a certain point. So that would designate you as a legitimate business. So for your bank's purposes, that would make you a legitimate business. Sure, it's not nice to be in a business zone, but, you know, that's an argument the, the planning board, that's what you're here to make that argument for. I will point out to the planning board that every one of these properties here is a budding residential property. So we always do, we're, we're, there's, unless we go all the way to Center Road, which I think the planning board should give for their lives if they were to try that. I think you'll find that we're going to be a planning properties right now. We've got two properties here that are making properties already that are in this district that are about residential properties right now. So that's one of the things that the board should take into consideration. Not to do, not to diminish the concern of, of the neighbors, you know, who are very concerned about what happens here and how it impacts them, because they're not in a mixed-use district, they're in a residential district, be it R four or R three, whatever the comp plan comes up with. Simple fact of the matter is, the board has to be sensitive to making sure that mixed uses in here don't infringe upon the adjoining district. And that's where your design stands, you're going to have to come and play. End scale.
Question. Where the word cabin is, okay, I'm all cabin of a big lot, which is a.
Something you want to say.
Is that land lot, or is that?
Stand up and yell at him.
Big white one, that's what a rabbit used to be, and they have assets through it.
I just.
It's from Center.
To back up just a step here, that, that last lot that the gentleman was just talking about already has a building on it that's just under five thousand square feet, right, you stood directly. If, if the planning board decides to define small as, let's say, five thousand square feet, forty-five hundred, four thousand, regardless of how many parcels were adjoint to that, that building can't ever get any bigger. If its use changes, they could tear it down and put up something entirely different, it still can't get any bigger. So regardless of, you know, if somebody with, with some serious funds came in and bought up every property. up every property along Long Cabin Road, they can put up one 5,000 square foot building. End of story, because that's the definition of small, and that's what the comprehensive plan suggested for the zone. So, I think whatever the board decides as the definition of small is critical to this mixed use district working both for business owners and for residents.
Okay, I want to address what she's saying. The planning board today has said that. That doesn't go into eternity. I come from Florida, I've seen where a residential district dissolves due to these types of things. Where it suddenly starts changing over, it suddenly starts getting bought up, people start to abandon, all right? And I'm not saying this is gonna happen tomorrow, all right? But, to say that that, the John Clark parcels could never become anything else is a foolish notion. They could become something else, it could be developed into something else, it could happen regardless of what we decide here today. All right? That's a possibility. But, if you go ahead and say, yep, then it already is, and then it becomes easier, because you've already established that as commercial. I have no problem with my neighbors. You guys being there are great, it's who might follow you that bothers them.
But, we can't expand because you will limit it to 5,000 square feet?
No, no, that's today. You can't, you cannot expand today, okay? That's today. Tomorrow, as that area changes, the rules may change as well.
And I might have read that wrong. I was under the impression, you know, we're going through this whole square footage thing, because I read a few things, like, anything less than 5,000 square feet, I assumed that small scale was 5,000 square feet, and that was the biggest one I had. So, that's why I was confused, that's why we're going through this. I did notice one of the changes that was put on, on one of the uses of restaurants, you had, you kept the seating at 50 seats.
We can't fill that when we get to it?
I'd rather get to it now.
I'd rather get to it.
I mean, we're just going in circles.
We need to establish what the minimum square footage is.
Mr. Lovejoy's been there since the eighties, okay? Back then, that was allowed before the comprehensive plan came through, which restricted per se businesses and made it only residential. That's why beforehand, it was allowed to be there. Now, I mean, what they're trying to do is, just to come back to, so that it's legit.
But, Marty, we just said that the new, the new changes already will allow for that type of use.
Correct.
So, we realize that that was a mistake, just to not allow something that's already there, so we, we, so it is allowed.
I won't say anymore, can't finish, so, no, but.
Marty, it's called a discussion or dialogue.
I was trying to cut, it was cut off. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on. What are we gonna go with this then? We're gonna make a decision on?
We have to make a decision.
Ted, I have a question.
Sure.
In the conditional use, item number six, low impact manufacturing, the change was not to exceed 5,000 one square feet. Also, on page six, low impact manufacturing, it appears that there's not, it's 6,000 square feet? Is that just a, needs to be clarified, or am I missing a paper or something?
No, but remember, low impact manufacturing, that isn't the only place where it exists in the ordinance. We have it also in several other districts, and it's 6,000 there. If we make it 5,000 here, that supersedes the definition. Okay? That's the only reason why we.
Yeah, I didn't realize that that wasn't, but this says definition is pertinent.
Permanent, right, I didn't see that part.
So, it's 6,000.
No, it's, it's, it can be up to 6,000 in other zones. And up to 5,000 in the TCD, right?
Yes. And this number of 5,000, I just want to put it out, the numbers in here, all of these are just suggestions right now, what the board really needs to do is, A, establish what small is in this district. What is the size, the square footage we're gonna be working with? You know, for a building. If you want to limit a certain use to a smaller scale than the small, fine, terrific, yeah. If you think personal, 5,000 square foot personal use is a big use. But, if you want to limit those, fine, terrific. Same thing with lodging, you know, we have to deal, we're dealing with scale here, but we need to establish what small is, and whether it's restaurants allowed, or lodging, or any other use, we have to really determine what is a relative scale that is, that is, that fits in this neighborhood. 5,000 is what we started off with. You see that we have probably existing building structure, except for a few, a few other one, a few exceptions in there, the average building size is gonna be less than 5,000. What you pick is, is what's gonna be the determining factor. So, that would be the first thing. The second thing we would need to do, I think that we want to accomplish, is next to move on to make a decision over where the boundaries of this district are. And the third thing is that we move into some of these uses, like lodging, and like restaurants, and then some of the things that we've crossed out as a result of the public workshop that we had, where we got a lot of pushback on, that the board felt at the time or seemed to be willing to part with at the time. So, in order to make progress, I think we need to take each one of these issues step by step and complete them. Otherwise, a great developer will probably just keep going around in circles unless we establish those thresholds.
Well, hopefully, can we put all of our motions on square footage?
Okay, just to get the ball rolling, I make a motion that small scale, you determine 5,000, not greater than 5,000 square feet. Do we have a second on that? Marty, second? Okay, discussion? Discussion by Boyd. Maybe. So, is that someplace that's listed? Because what I see in here is that certain uses are have a limit, certain uses may not have a limit. Right. What we would do is either do one of two things. We would, is putting up a front that all buildings, all new construction must be, must be less than, all expansions must be not greater than 5,000 square feet, or else we attach them to the uses, as we say, as we have in here. For instance, commercial uses, commercial services here doesn't have a limitation. We could have 10,000 square foot bank, we could have Rite Aid in there, which is usually 10,000 square foot footprint. Rite Aid fit there.
So, this, this motion is only addressing low impact manufacture?
No, this is only, this is only dealing with what we're gonna consider to be the largest sized building. New construction or expansion in the district.
What about the Rite Aid thing you gave?
A Rite Aid, usually, as I said, is 10,000 square feet, they wouldn't go in here. Hannaford clearly wouldn't go in here, they're 50,000 square. That's their usual line.
They wouldn't, as I'm looking at the ordinance on paper that's in front of me, a 10,000 square foot commercial services building would be allowed.
Yeah, yeah.
Without some modifications to the language.
Yeah, without, actually probably putting it, what we would do is, we would put it over in space and bulk table.
Right, put a maximum building.
Maximum buildings footprint on it. That would be per building. Now, if you had a large, let's say, the nightmare, the nightmare discussion there, if you had multiple buildings, you could do multiple buildings. When you put together your several parcels and you have multiple buildings, you got multiple buildings. There just can't be more than 5,000 square feet each. As long as you meet your, your, your net residential, your net development density, your maximum area of surface.
Unless you put the caveat on it per lot.
Unless you put the caveat on it per lot. The only time that we ever have, that we have a caveat of one building, one lot, is within the residential.
No, but I could see, I could see the makeup of this district warranting something similar to that.
Yeah.
Or, multiple buildings not to exceed 5,000.
Well, if you did that, then that's, yeah. I was gonna use the example, for instance, Linda's land's one of the few large pieces, she could put another building in there, she could make the, make the square footage work. You know, and she could make the, I guess she would say the coverage work.
She still would be allowed to.
Yeah, because your maximum building size would be 5,000. If you put it here, if you put it in here, that your maximum building size, you have see how your maximum building lot coverage, you're putting there maximum building footprint, 5,000. Then that limits everything, you know? If you want to make uses, certain uses, less than that, then, then you'd put them over on here, or you could put them here, either one. But, if you put it there, then you don't have to put it on every single one of these things, which was what you would have to do otherwise.
So, we have, we have to be careful. The way I heard your motion is, it wasn't necessarily type of building, with type of use.
Well, that was the mass, the maximum of 5,000.
Okay, because I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's what the comprehensive planning committee was looking at, saying, what is, you know, we say small buildings.
Yeah, we've gone to this number a couple times in the past, but this isn't.
And that's, that's per building, not per lot, that's another issue that.
Yes.
All right. Wait, I still have a question. After small, I'm trying to, do we have anything else in here for a larger? I mean, I'd say, like, for example, okay, if you had the acreage, okay, where there is an existing building already, okay, at 7,000 square feet, okay, for the expansion, is she allowed to expand it upon a lot of another 5,000? That's a question, I'm asking a question.
If she wanted to put another building up and commit her coverage, yeah, she could put another building up.
Another building.
Yeah.
Not to exceed, huh? Not to exceed 5,000.
Not to exceed 5,000.
A new building, I'm sorry.
A new building could, if, if she wanted to put a second building up, and there was enough setbacks and everything.
Depends on, okay. This has depended on a couple other motions that you guys are discussing, that it's not that cut and dry.
Right.
Yeah, to your, to your point. One, if we have the 5,000 maximum, one building, one lot, then no, there is no expansion. One, if the total of the buildings, one, two, three, or four, cannot exceed 5,000, then there would be no expansion of a 7,000. But, I just don't want you to set the wrong, no, it's just for clarification, nothing. Firmly, you get all of these things in order.
Good, good point, and I think the one thing that we can maybe discuss is, to allow for expansion for an existing building, when we do that for most other districts, should we do that here?
Well, not really, because if you get a 7,000 square foot building, you allow it to extend by 5,000 square feet.
Maybe percentage or something, maybe.
Mr. Chairman, at this point of order, we have a motion, we have a second discussion to focus on.
Okay.
Maximum building.
Okay, so, as far as the maximum size, 5,000 square feet for small.
This is for the district. We're only doing small scale in the district. The maximum building, one building size, that's all we're.
Each building, if you have more than one building, then each building.
Okay, question for you, then, also, wait, can you build a house greater than that? If you wanted.
It's a building.
It's a building, yeah. Now, it's 4,000 square feet in the square.
I mean, because your, a house is residential, but it's still in the same zone.
No, I agree with you, Marty.
That's why I'm just asking, I mean, because you got all the riches and everything else who's coming in.
You're saying no.
And they're spending multi-millions of dollars.
But, that's, the number that is in here with square footage is the gross square footage of the residence, not the building's footprint, I presume.
Oh, that's the question.
Yeah, that's what I wrote.
Because footprint, that's a big building. It's not a big building, but it's a big building.
We're, we're discussing total square footage. Building footprint.
My footprint.
No. Are you talking building footprint? Well, clarification, which is too shady.
You're talking a 5,000 square foot building, it could have two floors at 25 inch, that's 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, you could have, one, if it's footprint, you could have 10,000 square feet on the lot, two stories of 5,000, or three stories of 5,000. 15,000 square foot.
What was your motion, David? 5,000 was maximum, maximum total square foot.
Square footage, yeah.
Hey, the young lady here has something she wants to say.
We got a lot of discussion going on. Jamie, you seconded that?
No.
Who seconded it?
Marty.
I, I consider it a footprint, I mean, not total square footage.
So, it could be three stories tall?
Yeah. I'm talking about a little bit.
Lot size, we go by lot size.
Small scale.
So, what's this? Opposite plans as small scale.
And 5,000 square foot footprint, three times over, is not small scale. Why, you have 15,000 square feet, and that's not small scale anymore.
I thought your motion was total square footage, of the building was 5,000.
That was the motion.
Yeah, that's the motion. So, any more discussion, or is that just the motion, all in favor? Like, how's the total area? Any opposed?
Can I ask a question, please?
What does that mean to my place?
It's already there.
Okay.
And now depending on some of the other potential motions, you may even be in a better place.
Yeah, so we know.
When you discuss and consider where you're going to put all of these numbers and what you're going to call them, please keep in mind the vision of the neighborhood. This is, for the most part, they're relatively small lots. They are two-thirds residences. The intent of the comp plan was to take existing businesses, give them the commercial designation they need to operate by being in a mixed use district, as opposed to being stuck in a residential district. And remember, if you go back to where the comp plan started, putting them in as part of a residential district was a purely arbitrary decision, it was not based on thought. It was just, there you are, draw line. We're trying to fix some of those problems by rewording the comp plan and redirecting some of this. So, all, the discussion that I just heard, you're getting caught up in your own definitions and, I don't know how to say it.
Fine line.
Minutia, as opposed to looking at the big picture. When you're done with what you vote on, what is this going to look like at Townhouse Corner when you stand on the street? Not what does it look like on paper according to, you know, is it square footage, can it be three stories, can it, you know, can it be just, you know, one foot wide and 5,000 feet long? Think about what it's going to look like as you define it in your ordinance.
And that, that's, that's the standards we have to define as well, we have to, have to set those standards.
I understand that, but based upon the discussion that I just heard, you, you're doing your best, but, by the same token, keep the vision that's in the comp plan in mind, you know? Small scale means it fits in with the neighborhood, does not impinge on the neighbors.
Well, I don't think we've violated that yet.
Not yet. No, but when you have a 3,000 square foot lot, I mean, a three acre lot, I mean, you've got, I mean, usually put buildings according to, you know, lot size, some lot, I just, I think.
Yeah, so, so that is, we've got that one thing done, so, we'll move from here, but what's the next issue?
Can I, please ask that one issue that we discussed next, because I have one.
We get the answer. So, Ted, what is the next item?
We have, you know.
Uh, we have, you know, we go through the permitted uses and see, um, what, if, if there's any other restrictions that you want regarding, assuming the uses here that you could generate. And one of the concerns was like traffic, what traffic that's generated. There was concern about, um, uh, you know, whether, for instance, lodging or restaurants. Both of those, the concern was, if you have a thousand, 5,000 square foot built in a restaurant, it's going to be an incredible impact on the neighborhood, and that's absolutely true. You have 5,000 square foot lodging facility, probably not so much. But, uh, at least, I think it's 6,000 square foot, just so you know, 6,200, I think. So, yeah, you start with... It's big.
What is that?
6,200.
What is 6,200?
Just, just the footprint, 6,200. So the issue is, the issue is, um, the, the issue that was brought up was the question of lodging can be a huge impact, depending on how many rooms. Restaurants can be a huge impact because of how many rooms, or how many, how many people come and go. What else? A low-impact manufacturing is a question in terms of, you know, the types of, of usage, types of product produced and whether there are shifts, you know, and employees coming and going. And I think there was one of them. A lot of mental service, unless your wife still even had that, I think you guys got rid of that a long time ago.
Of all the things that are on our list, permitted in conditionals,
Yeah.
are there anything that, um, any of those that we don't want to have or we want to have more constraints?
Well, I think you talked about, on conditionals, you were talking about, don't want your facilities, just kind of ridiculous, because there's no real place in the room with a bunch of folks, so you should just get rid of that.
Sure, we're off river road.
Uh, yeah, but we don't, the district isn't in river road.
No, but you said don't want it. You don't got the water, you can't float it.
That's right, so...
Unless you trail it.
So, drive-through facilities, I think was universally condemned at that meeting. I think the planning board agreed that probably would not be in, in the, in the character of the district. Uh, golf courses, this is absurd, this is no one. The issue of low-impact manufacturing was not, it was not a, it's not, um, I didn't get any clear direction on that. I think there was a lot of concern about what constitutes low-impact manufacturing. I think we also agreed that if marijuana care gave a protection facility, should go up on Route 1, if anyone said that. I wasn't sure about multifamily. Had daycare still, so, just contractor storage yards, shooting everything.
Mr. Chairman, you know, can I ask why we skipped all of the permitted uses?
What? We're, I, there's no good reason why, we just, we just pick one or the other.
Yeah, but we asked if we could talk about something in more than, we're just, I mean...
We're moving forward, trying to...
You, you skipped all the permitted uses and you're right for conditions.
Normally, as, as a, a board, it is held just to board discussions and trying to open up to input from all of you. As long as, as we can do our business, we'll get to all of it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw the line for right now, just hold off on input if, if we could.
This is ridiculous. Can somebody please tell me when the 50-seat restaurant limitation went in?
It hasn't.
How did it get added?
Let's, again, you're, you're interrupting, we have to conduct this in some type of manner. We, in order to move forward...
I think my hand raised for a very long time.
And I've, I've called on you many, many times, along with, with most of the others. I'm, I'm trying to include as much, but we still need to, to move forward. So if, if you, if, I'll, if you have a question...
I do have a question. I do, and I honestly, you've been standing and sitting here and you've been ignored, but...
No, you've been ignored, I have to start, Ted was, was explaining something, and I was listening to him. That's called respect, it's not called ignored, okay? And, and we just need to conduct business in a formal way and, and allow for as much input as possible. We're doing our job in the best we can.
I know, I've been...
You know what it's like, so we're trying.
And I'm trying to.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Thanks a lot, I bet this is in these meetings, all right? And it's just getting to be the most frustrating thing I've ever been through. I asked you a question when I was here last. I know we were talking about some issues that people had, but I did not, was, didn't hear where the, it was necessary to drop the restaurants down to 50 seating, 50 seats. I would like to know when that was discussed and why it's on there.
And why it goes against the town ordinance that we already have for restaurants? Why is this district factory different from the rest of the town?
You know, restaurants are based on basically facility size and parking. If you have the, so stand, the, the ability to park and you have the, the, the proper square footage, then that's how you determine a restaurant size. It's not, I don't know where this cap came from and how it's thrown in.
I, I will tell you, okay? First of all, this was brought up by the citizens at the meeting.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, and I...
No, it was at that meeting.
Yes, so it, so was the person who wrote, took the minutes. And we're concerned that, in fact, I didn't think I brought up the issue of 50 seats to this board, so we can...
I, 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 I listened to the video.
Then, do you want an answer, or do you want to argue?
I wonder why you think it's okay to put in what you want, while we're here in the group.
Because my job as a planner is to make recommendations to the board and also float ideas for them to approve. I put in something for them to discuss, not something to pass, because this is a, this is a point of discussion. I'm putting in something for the board to consider. I have other information for them to look at, but I put it in as a, as a topic of discussion. The only time this thing becomes any kind of final document is when these guys vote on it. So, and they haven't voted on it, they haven't even discussed it yet. We're going to discuss it, but the point is that when they ask me, or when they say, look, respond to what happened at that meeting, and I do. And I go through and I watch the video, and I look at the minutes, and I hear that, that we've got some feedback from neighbors that they're concerned about the size of a restaurant. I say, okay, well, let's talk about seating. And then, listen to me. And then what I'm going to do is I'm going to investigate that and float some ideas for the board. They make the decision whether or not that idea is valid, or whether it's something that, that we just throw out and go a different direction. I have more material for them to examine in terms of square footage, in terms of restaurant size, and in terms of relative parking. I haven't even handed that stuff out yet. So I have more material for them, but why did I put it in there? As a topic of discussion. Just like I put in a topic of discussion of 5,000 square feet. I've got 3,000 square feet for personal, uh, personal uses. We haven't even gotten to that yet. And that's, that's a question this board will review. And the reason why is because there's been issues, questions in the past of how big should we have a personal services? So, we're discussing it now. We're going to be discussing a number of things, and the chairman, who's running the meeting, asked me about the conditional uses. So I responded to it. So, the restaurant thing, if you want to discuss that now, it's up to the chairman. Now I will hand out the information. But I'm not taking license to change anything, because it's nothing right now until these guys decide it, until the townspeople vote on it. Then it's an ordinance. Until now, it's a proposal, and that's it.
My question was, if you have the square footage and you're going to throw a number out there, you have all the square footage of all the lots, so then why wouldn't you go by the estimated amount of seats per lot?
And I have that other information. Because I have additional information. I threw it in as something for the board to consider, but I have additional information, we haven't finished this yet. And we won't get to it unless we proceed in a orderly fashion, and that's what we need to do, is to take on...
So we're going to go from A to Z and not go A, B, C, D?
We're all over the place, and we're just, I asked a question that had to do with that, and Ted responded to it, so... So what, I, I'd like to just get back so we can move forward, get back to business. So, so we, my question was, are there, are there certain uses here that we know would be, are right? The ones that are scratched, that have the strikeout, we all agree that, that they should be off the list?
You're talking conditional?
Well, it, all of it, yeah.
Let's put it this way, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
We went through this when you weren't here. Okay, and that's why it was pushed the way it is.
Okay.
So instead of rehashing it all over again, I mean, okay, but like I said...
My question was, is that, that's what we're, that's, we're all right with that? That's pretty much, that was my, my staging question. We're all right, we already had it.
We did.
Okay.
I mean, instead of redoing it three times around again...
Well, that's his question.
He wasn't here, the rest of us were here.
Yeah, that's why he's asking.
That's why he's asking a question, if it's all right with us.
We agree with that.
Because we, we didn't review these as minutes. I just want to make sure we're all right with, with what was struck out. So, I'm here, and we're all right with them, so... Do we need to go over each use one at a time? I think we've already done that as well. Anyway, is there anything that, that doesn't need, I know there's, the restaurants certainly is one to, to discuss.
Yeah.
And what was another one?
Lodging.
Lodging?
Yeah.
Well, let's start from the top, then, so we'll go to lodging, which is the first one with, on the line.
Well, I just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we can do that, but since there's such, such concern about restaurants, why don't we dive into that one?
Okay. Any objection to that?
That's what, that's what they wanted to do. That's why they're here.
Mine is one property, one of those focused on that, there's other property, always focused on other things.
They left you.
Yeah, it's not a workshop. It's, we, we, we're trying to get through...
Well, the last workshop, I don't recall anybody ever saying 50 seats.
I posed the question, because the question was asked, how do we limit restaurants? By area or by seats? And I said, yeah, we're going to put the seats, and one of them would be, let's say, 50 seats. He said, well, okay, check it out. So I put in the 50 seats. I have some restaurant stats here on relative size, because the issue is size. The issue is also size and impacts, of course, when we're still talking about something that's compatible with a mixed-use neighborhood. And throwing the 50 as a starting point, but if you look at this stuff, I put it up on the board, the state fire marshal, state fire marshal has minimum, has a minimum square footage for all restaurants with fixed seating. That's 15 square feet per, um, per seat.
They also have rules for the aisle ways and everything else.
Yeah, they do have rules for aisle.
You have 15, you have 15 per chair.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, that's, that's what you start with, and then you have to lay it out and show where your aisles are, and then you have the proper, you know, you have the...
Egress, egress.
Egress, ingress.
Can we simply work backwards, if whatever size the building is, the formulas will allow for so many seats?
Well, I, 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 I did it very sloppily, I wanted to make it, and we can... This is really what it boils down to. If I can run, run this by you. Uh, the first thing is the, you know, the National Restaurant Association says the usual is the backup house is 30% of the total floor area, that's the standard. Backup house is the kitchen, the supply cabinets, NAF, restrooms, you know, locker rooms, for employees. That's, you know, storage of supplies, dishes and all the rest of that stuff, that's kind of backup house. So they say it's about 30% of the floor area for that. State fire, main state fire marshal says minimum square footage for seating, this is how they calculate, is 15 square feet per seat. Our parking requirements are one parking space per three seats. Because the, in, in, as far as the, the restaurant association is considered, the greatest terminal, the greatest demand for, for tables is two-seat tables. So, ITE has, most tables have four, that's kind of the standard. Um, so they picked up the average when they did their, their parking space requirements, and apparently adopted those years ago, so it's one space per three seats. So, let's look at the 50-seat restaurant, because remember, what we're trying to find is something that is in scale to the neighborhood, because that's what the comp plan said. So we say, okay, scale. Well, if we take the 30% floor area and we take the seating for 50 seats at 15 square foot, we're getting a, a restaurant of about 1,072 square feet. That's going to also require 17 parking spaces or a little, under 5,000 square feet of parking. That's 17 spaces, based on a 9x18 parking space plus half of the, uh, the aisle behind it. So it's assuming that it's a double-ruined aisle. If we go up to a 100-square-foot restaurant, seat restaurant, you see that our total square footage rises to 2,100, 2,144. And that's with 1,500 square feet of seating and 644 square feet of backup house operations. Um, and then the parking jumps up, it's going to double. I mean, basically, we've got 34 spaces, and that's going to be 9,000, about 9,100 to 10,000 square feet. A 150-seat restaurant, that's going to be 3,200 square feet. And that's, you know, 2,500, you know, it's 2,250 square feet of seating with almost 1,000 square feet of backup house. Now, that's idealized. It's probably going to be bigger because of aisles, because of egresses, because of backup spaces, because of loading docks, all the rest of that. And 50, a 50-seat res, 50, 150-seat restaurant is 50 parking spaces. That's going to be over 1,300, 13,000 square feet. So we're talking about, um, basically a quarter of an acre. So, you know, it's not, it's not a small amount of, of space. I didn't get into trip generation on that, you know, which is probably always going to be an issue with the neighborhood is how many trips are generated. The planning board's pretty much integrating it, a bit of drive-through, so that, that was, that's a different traffic dynamic. You know, we did hear about traffic generation. So I haven't done the ITE stuff on the, on the, what we can expect for, for traffic impacts from that kind of thing. But, and this gives you an idea of the square footage of the restaurant. So 50 square foot, 50-seat square, uh, restaurant, it's a very small restaurant. It's 1,000 square feet, let's say 1,200 at the most. So, and only 17 spaces, I don't know, turnover is all depends on the type of restaurant. High-end, you know, family, you know, the, the seating times differ on the ITE. 100-seat restaurant, that's, you know, 21, you know, that's, that's, that's a little bigger facility. You see, even if we get to 150-seat restaurant, we're in a situation here where it's still under a 5,000 square foot. Considerably under. I mean, we can keep going with this. You could almost double that, we could go to 225 and still be under that 5,000. The point is, how much of an impact is that on the neighborhood? Is that a huge impact, is that a small impact? And we have existing uses that that can go into, but we're not new uses. And, you know, that's the balancing act we're going to be having with the neighborhoods here. Yes, the neighborhood's residential, but the neighborhood's business. How we, what's, where we fit that small, we're still looking for that small. 150-seat restaurant is a good-sized restaurant. Not huge, but it's a good-sized restaurant. So, um, do we stick with the 5,000? Do we limit it to the seating? You know where our trip generation is going to be. So, or if you want me to get trip generation, I can tell you what the turnaround is. We want, we want any businesses down there to succeed. And yet we still have to meet that mandate of keeping it within scale where it isn't a huge impact to the neighborhood. And that's, that's frankly the, the tough job that we've got, is coming out with what, what fits. 150-seat restaurant? Right? 10,000 square feet of space.
Yeah, I have a question.
Good.
What was the capacity of portfolio?
Oh...
Existing.
I don't know, I, I don't know, that it all depends on, because I know a lot of, not all of the space was for the restaurant. They also had a bar, and this isn't including bar. This isn't including the bar element of, of the space either, which increases the space. That's seven square feet for a bar area, per person, so that's where the fire marshal is. So, I don't know what the original capacity of portfolio was.
Oh, yeah, it must have been at least 150.
Oh, it was over 150, sure.
Where's the seafood center?
Where's the sea? Where's the seafood center?
I don't know.
100? What happened?
I bet it's 100 to 150.
I think it's about 150, yeah.
I'd use an idea of a scale.
Yeah, that's a good one, that's a good one.
We also need to be aware of, and, and, you know, there are two things. One is, that I'd like to say, one is, a small restaurant, it'd have difficulty staying busy with so few seats. On the other hand...
Unless you find any.
If, well, if, if they can make it. On the other hand, you get, like the seafood center, it's on Route 1, so the, the traffic generation doesn't impact anything but other businesses there, so...
Yeah, but, but also too, if you turn out to stay there on Lock Haven Road, there's enough traffic, goes down there, flips back and forth to, uh, the port, that it turn out necessarily going anywhere else.
If you capture that business, it's, but it's the, the, taking the left-hand turns in and out of... in and out of the park.
You have a question here for...
I have one concern, man.
Yeah, I think Matt first.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few visuals, numbers for you. Earth Restaurant has two seedings a night. They have eighty-four seats. Hurricane Restaurant has a hundred-and-eight seats. Personally, as a rest, having a food business, anything less than a hundred seats, it won't survive. Just my personal opinion for the economic growth. So, those are just some visual sizes. The Breakwater Inn, the inn and the bar is a hundred-and-seventeen seats.
Are they year-round? Are they year-round as season? I'll just ask a question.
They're half. Half are seasonal, half are year-round.
Good, thank you. Okay. The property question is one of them that I originally expressed concern on. And that is the dumping off of traffic on Senate Road versus Lock Haven. All right? And people told me that that's a wet land, that couldn't happen, blah, blah, blah. There is already a driveway that goes through there. And that's my greatest concern as a neighbor to this. If the traffic stays on a primary road, that's less impact. At eleven o'clock at night, let's say they were doing fantastic. They had great bar and everything else. And people are pulling out of there. Now, I'm faced with noise and traffic till two, three o'clock in the morning. And at three-thirty, I'm faced with shit-start traffic. So, it becomes a never-ending scenario.
One of the things that I think I'd like to see is all the entrances and exits be pulled on Lock Haven.
I would agree with you. And there was, there's nothing that prevents it with the way it's sounded right now.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to...
I think that was discussed. We were discussing that at the last workshop. Okay? So, because it turned out right now, as it was stated, right now, Senate Road is becoming nothing but more than a racetrack. Everybody's flipping up and down there. And we're at the workshop. It was stated very clearly, the businesses, what there would be in that zone, would be not entering or exiting on the Senate Road to increase more traffic. Correct by all the board members?
Well, I think that I... I think people expressed that opinion, yes.
There's only two pieces of property that border the Senate Road.
Yeah.
I think we have to remember that you're going to get traffic. So, it's going to go somewhere. And why is it fair to send it all in one place and not share it? You know, I don't know that that's, that we should necessarily send it all to Lock Haven Road.
You only have two pieces of property that border the Senate Road.
But I'm saying, you know, the discussion about traffic in Senate Road, I don't know that, you know, everybody has traffic and some of us have a whole lot more than others. And it's twenty-four hours a day. You know, it's just part of life.
We've got collector arterio right now.
Yeah, it is an arterio.
Yeah, but it, well...
Always involved.
It's a way to decrease possession, arterio rather than...
But it's also a state road.
Right. Lock Haven is a state road.
Yes, yes, yeah, it is. Which is one of the reasons why it's an arterio. So, you want to come up with a number for restaurants?
I think we should turn that into more facts.
Personally, I'm not a fan of doing zoning by, you know, limiting seats. You know, by that. Look at building sizes, you know, if, based on Tad's table here, if we feel that a restaurant of a certain scope is going to be too large, too big for this zone, then let's try and identify that with a building size. You know, people can do all kinds of different things creatively within their business to have more or less seats, you know, based on what they're trying to do. And so, just sort of arbitrarily confine them, I'm not in favor of.
You've got a five-thousand-square-foot building, and you're saying thirty percent of it, which is fifteen hundred square feet. How you look at thirty-five hundred square feet? How many seats would that take?
Oh, how about fifteen?
Based on this, it's, I'm sixty.
Yeah, you're right.
We really got to about twenty or twenty-five square feet, because you've got the aisles and everything else, so it's significant.
It probably will be with the aisles, but, you know, that's the way the, that's the way the fire marshal does it. He does it that way. He does gross square, square foot.
He takes a square area of the seating area and says...
Yes, in charge of a real estate.
We went through that with that one.
We did. We did it based on fifteen square foot.
So, if the maximum is five thousand, thirty percent is backups?
Well, that's the industry standard. That doesn't mean somebody follows that industry standard.
Right. But that could be a guide for us to look at for seating capacity.
Well, fine dining is eighteen square foot for the Restaurant Association, you know, so...
Any more elbow room?
Throughs atmosphere, I guess. I don't know. That's what they say. You know, the question is, I guess the first question is, is this, is this a, is this a big enough issue to make limitations on restaurant sizes in terms of impacts? Is this a big enough issue? And, because the issue of small scale that the comp plan committee did wasn't just, I don't think necessarily limited to building size, but to uses or intensity of uses. And I would assume that that would be one of the things that they were doing at the time.
How many seats does that give?
Twelve hundred.
Wow.
Well, twelve hundred, they have a capacity of twelve hundred people.
But for inside seating?
Yeah, well, inside and outside.
Inside, outside, backside.
Outside, that's large scale.
That's a large-scale thing.
I don't think there's any intentions to have them really done in some way.
Well, it could be, you know.
It could be.
Anything to start with.
Not from the current owners, but the future owners could...
No, I understand. But I mean, once again, if you go off by what the rest of the world does based on lot size and building size, why does this have to be being different?
Well, if this was the DB one, I would agree with you. But I think the issue is we're still grappling this, keeping this scale.
Small size, small scale.
That's the challenge. That's the only challenge. So, I think we're all over fifty at this point, but... So...
The trip generation seems to be the key here. I mean, that's, that's...
Is that based on, like, state formulas or... Well, the trip generation is based on the ITE, the International Traffic Engineers Handbook. I don't know absolutely, but yeah. I'm going to look and see.
Don't you people think a good restaurant would be a drawing card for the area? I mean, if you have some shops and stuff down there that people might want to use?
That's the whole purpose of that stuff.
That's kind of why we're doing this. The reason we're doing this is because we have existing businesses down there non-conforming. And we think this area has a lot of potential. But we are limited. This isn't another DD two district. This isn't a hundred-thousand-square-foot district. This is where the comp plan committee, right, that said, hey, it needs to be in scale with the existing neighborhood. And that's what we're grappling with. This is trying to make it reasonable and at the same time, keep it somewhat in scale. So, it doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood. Any one use doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood.
I'll tell you, you know, it's kind of sad in such a way, true. But to ask or find out what the property there was speaking of, they're not here now, because we weren't going to take the subject up.
Well, we didn't say that, Marty.
It's their choice.
Yeah. We're still here. But there's very few properties that could even handle have more than a five-thousand-square-foot building anyways, so...
No, no.
Might be...
Five thousand, two acres, maybe.
Six or seven.
But like I said, we don't know the acres.
Yeah, I do. I can look at it. We've got two acres, three acres. I've got six acres. I've got ten acres almost there. I've got a hundred and eighty acres over here.
They're that big, okay.
They're that big. These are half acres. That's actually, these are thirty acres here. These are half acres. So, these will never be conforming because of, because of the size. They're just small lots, the tiny lots. So, maybe we need to look at the ITE trip generation tables, because I don't know how we can choose how many trips we want without knowing what those guidelines say.
Yeah, there's two sides.
What are you doing basing on trip generation?
How are you going to decide on trip generation? You're just going to pick a number and say, oh, that's...
Well, that's, and I brought it up. And the trouble with ITE is you don't work the ITE number anyway you want. And just because it comes out to a number that looks compatible with the business doesn't actually mean that they're not exceeded by fifty or under percent. It's a best guess based on, we ran into a couple of times which got... So, I don't know the answer. Maybe ITE isn't...
How do you determine it? Is it based on whatever they can do in there?
Five thousand square foot?
Since Lock Haven Road already has a tremendous amount of traffic on it, I think the point that was made before, and I've forgotten who said it, to capture some of that existing traffic with any good business, doesn't have to be the restaurant, but any good business would be a plus for a rental. And those cars are already there. So, even if you had a number for a restaurant, you know, from the book, what percentage of that number is already traveling that road? We have no way of knowing that. So, I don't know that that's a particularly relevant thing to look at.
More of the left-hand turns, but I think that's where it slows down traffic.
Right, well, and I don't know that the neighbors would be upset about that.
More noise, more businesses.
You know, but again, anything that happens there that's not a residence is going to increase traffic, whether it's a restaurant or something else. Assuming it's a viable business, people want to know that.
Although I would argue that if I put a little crepuce, crepucee tower there ten stories high with residential, that'll have an impact on traffic.
Yes, too. There's certainly a residential impact as well, but not to the extent of the business.
And we say a restaurant, because a restaurant's a really high generator, trip generator, relative to, let's say, a small t-shirt shop or an ice cream. Ice creams stand will generate a lot, too. They will generate a lot. They haven't even discussed takeouts. But, yeah, there's a lot of turnover. Restaurants, in order to survive, depend on turning people over quickly. And so, the objective is to create traffic. So, what do the board members say? Any motion or suggestions? Are you willing to...
I feel that what was expressed, we shouldn't restrict it by seats.
And a motion?
If I make a motion, I make a motion that we don't restrict restaurant capacity by seating capacity.
Okay. A second on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion.
For discussion, and are we saying that the five-thousand square feet is going to apply or is that going to be a different issue?
That should be a different issue.
And that was going to be my point. I mean, I agree with the premise. I just don't know. I don't know where it's going to get us in the long...
Right, but I just want to move this along, because it's moving on to nine o'clock. So, to move it along, I've made that motion that we don't limit it by seating capacity.
Okay. Second. There.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? So, all in favor? Can you oppose, men oppose? Okay, so, but we can still...
Work back.
We're still on the dock.
Yeah.
I have to take up the light on.
Okay, good.
I have a question to get some more information about Four Fathers.
What information does the board need to make a decision?
What was existing before? That's what I, my question was.
I'd have to go through old files to find that.
Possibly ask prior owner?
Terrific. I don't, that'd be great. But what would I care what the owner was?
Huh?
Do you know who the owner was?
Yeah.
Do we need to canvass a couple of restaurants locally? Get an idea of what their seating price is and size?
Well, I think Jen gave us that. We can get more, if you want me to get more. But if I'm not going to do it based on seating, why would I care about what the seating size is? You guys just decided we're not going to limit it by seating, we're limited by size. If limited at all, are you going to limit it at all? That's the question. So, I'm not going to do IT in it.
If I recall correctly, and this is a big vague recollection, I think Cervago up there is about six thousand square feet. Just to give some additional context.
Cervago's the mall? I mean, in the shopping center?
Can't forget.
Like having twenty, hundred, forty seats, maybe?
I don't remember those details, but...
Do you work on that, Chris?
That's why you remembered.
That's why I figured. I think it was about six thousand square feet. I could be a little off.
All right.
That's a good decision, Judge.
Oh, it's an excellent question.
So, if that falls under that five-thousand-square-foot building?
I think so, exactly.
Whatever they arrange, however they design it, in the longest you mentioned requirements.
That means a fire code?
Yeah. But let me ask this question. I hate it. I know I'm throwing speedballs, but is that the scale building that's appropriate in this number? That's the question.
Well, we just said it's the scale building that's appropriate for everything else to scale and dimension and design. The questions that come in are, from my, what I'm trying to explain are two things. This concept of the trip generation, if you will, even though it's not important totally, but how that's impacting on the other roads. Where is the, where is that outlet? And is there a, is there a way to get a balance? I'm not sure.
Frankly, I think that issue would be held at Playboard at the review. I don't think any claimer in the right mind would dump it down Senate Road. You know, I don't think you would do it. Tell where you want to put it. Traffic is out here. This is where the turn, this is where the lane width is suitable. This is the direct connection to all other arterials. So, you know, to me, that's not the issue so much as, you said, the ITE. It's going to be dumped onto a city road. It's going to be dumping onto state highway. But there's residents who live on that state highway. There's residents who live on that state highway in the city. So, what do you want me to do?
That too with CM Brown across the street.
So, what is it that you folks, you want to stick with five thousand for restaurants too? Or do you not feel comfortable with that?
I'd like to turn out and get some facts and figures, because it turned out for this particular lot they were speaking of, it's...
Speaking of particular lot.
I, can I continue?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Particularly on this size of lot, okay, which was an existing restaurant, which building is more than five thousand square feet. I'd like to get some facts and figures.
Okay, what figures and facts do you want me to get them? Or are you going to talk to the former owner, find out?
I'll tell you the former owner. Mike Masell. Lots to cover. Simple. He owned it before.
But if we knew whatever number they had, what would we do with it? Are we going to say, oh, we add two hundred or...
It gives you an idea and gives you a guideline, just from what... It's not whether a plumber's number, it's the idea of what an area is. You say, because it's a seven-thousand-square-foot building, will I have to divide it in half for a restaurant? I mean, do they want to put a restaurant in there?
What I'd be afraid of is saying they can all put as many as they can into their building, which is five thousand square feet for most, in most cases.
Most of that wouldn't happen, you'd have to be there.
Except for one, then we're going to put an extra restriction on you.
Except for one, then we're gonna put an extra restriction on you, and I don't know if.
I like to get the facts and figures, that's what I said.
Okay.
Instead of turn around and try to pull everything out of a crystal ball and say, well, well, if, what if? Let's get to some of the, the facts.
If Four Fathers wasn't there, it was trying to be built today under the new owners of the building, would they be having a seven thousand square foot building?
We can't, first of all, because it's, because the fact is, it's residential.
Oh.
Because it was beforehand, it was an existing business.
Okay.
It was an existing business that was permitted, for the comprehensive, for the comprehensive plan, took all businesses out of the residential area.
So we can move forward, I think we, we'll, we'll move on to the next item, because on that, if, if we wanna get that extra information for whatever, for whatever, do it next time. But right now, what I'm hearing is no limit on per seat, right now, that's, that was the motion, whenever we, if we get more information.
I, I agree with Marty. What I think would be very helpful in the context of what we believe would be congruent to the neighborhood is, you know, how big is the seafood center? You know, how big is other restaurants in the area? Get a, you know, if we could, could understand a range of, you know, you've got, you've got, you know, all day breakfast down in Lower Village is, is this big, I'm just trying to think on the, the small end of things, I couldn't tell you how big that building is. Versus up to the Longhorn Steakhouse, or, or one of the places up there in Frederick Cross.
Yeah.
You know, what is a, a range, and use that information to try and assess which ones we think would be, would be consistent with the goals of that, that zone?
Even Steakhouse and Wells.
Yeah, which ones are easy to identify.
I mean, that's one place that the, the area is crying for. I mean, it may, but we don't know what, but we, yeah, we take it out of crystal ball.
To the chair?
Yeah.
Could the board tell me what, or should they wanna give the planner this issue, so we can be forward on this?
Down here, I need to pick a handful of restaurants right behind what their seating capacity is. So what kind of seating? Just how many seats they have.
We're not gonna be able to do this without seating capacity, I mean, they go hand in hand. So we're, you know, you're gonna find out what size square footage of a, a restaurant is with how many seats it serves. And that's, you're not gonna get away from seating capacity in this issue at all, because of the commercial, that's all he cares about, is the seating capacity.
As I said, so if you have a five thousand square foot building.
I will find out comparables, what the board is saying, and what they, I'm hearing it from Marty, and I'm hearing it from the rest of you, is what you want are comparables. You want me to get you some comparables on what sizes of popular restaurants around here, both specialized and maybe even chain for all of them, to get an idea of, of, of what the relative scales of these restaurants are, I will do that.
Okay.
I guess the unstated issue or concern that, that goes with this five thousand, I think you've done a really good job here. You can almost guess seating and size, and we did give some kind of comparables that we gave. You bring up the issue of an existing seven thou, what does that additional two thousand do with not only seats, but, um, square, the, the, not square footage, they were, they're limited to what's there already.
Well, some of that is second floors, you're correct.
I'm sorry.
Questions, how much is that, how much of that area is actual restaurant, and how much was back room, how much was?
See, getting that information to me isn't useful, because you don't know how much of it was dedicated.
I don't.
You know, and they don't, they only utilize fifty percent of what they're, they were capable of, you don't know. You know, so getting seats isn't, isn't good. Size of those isn't, and, and, I guess that's the only way to go, but.
Marty, we're also in business.
You have a question back there?
Yeah. Well, the only thing I can say is the board hasn't talked about parking, there's only a couple lots in that whole business zone that are large enough to be able to put in a five thousand square foot building and then have the parking.
Yep.
As well. So there's only like two, maybe three lots in that whole thing, so once you put that into consideration, you get a little egg.
That's why I said earlier, there's only a few that.
That's it. And the one is the one that's already existing, and other than that, I don't think there's another lot, large enough to support the parking and everything else.
The one next to you.
Huh?
The one next to you, that's big, huh?
Yeah, but that's not on the main drag, no one's gonna go down inside, you have to have road frontage. And believe me, I worked at Four Fathers, I, I know what that place was like in the day.
Okay, what was the square footage?
I don't know, this is going back to when Rapp and Chuck owned it, and after George had it burned down.
Now, what were the?
Granted, we don't have to go anywhere for a history.
Yeah, we had a right here. There was no impact on the neighborhood, because there were no houses on the Center Road.
Yes, there were.
Well, a couple.
There was the same, based on the same amount, it was there now.
All right, so.
I think so, we'll move forward on that.
The question isn't spoken more.
Oh, I'm sorry, to the chair.
A question on number twenty, I, I would like to at least get finished with permitted uses.
Yeah.
I have a question on number twenty, retail of less than five thousand square feet, net leasable area, I'm wondering what and why net leasable area?
Well, it's kind of immaterial at this point, because our previous building is five thousand square feet, so that disappears. That's gross versus net.
Okay, so that, that's no longer a valid thing, but a legal area.
Unless the board tells me otherwise, I'm going to be eliminating all of the restrictions on the sizes of buildings in here.
With seventeen and twenty.
That includes personal use, personal services, professional offices, everything. Lodging, we haven't even discussed lodging, five thousand square foot is not a, not a very big lodging facility, by the way.
Well, for, for, John, and that, that'll end up just being retail.
That's gonna be just retail, just retail. That's what we're watching, okay.
Well, bed and breakfasts.
That's not a logic.
Well, you wanna discuss that, eleven?
Uh, see why that would be allowed down there?
Yeah, it should be, but as far as the, still keep it at five thousand square feet, and this says no more than twelve rooms, units.
I don't think most bed and breakfasts are that many anyway.
But lodging is.
No, lodging, lodging is one thing, bed and breakfast is another.
Yeah.
It's a totally different category, because under the old definition, lodging you had to have it for you. Okay, bed and breakfast, you do not need to have it for you.
That's not a, a definition of lodging. Lodging is, is all different.
Hotel.
Yeah.
Inn.
The only thing that four rooms refers to is a boarding house. That's all.
Oh, good, good, I didn't catch that. So there'd be no limit to rooms for any other type.
Any other ones, but just a boarding house is totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if that's underlying, if it fits in five thousand square feet.
To give a, give Tom some attention.
Oh. Yeah, but underlying this applies to that.
Just the boarding houses.
Just to let you know that boarding houses would also be allowed.
Okay. And anything else on permitted uses? Are we, so, so where, I'm sorry, I was raising things and not paying a single attention to that.
The way it was written within the line, I was reading differently, I thought twelve rooms included all lodging, but it's just for boarding houses.
No, it's for all lodging.
No, no, no.
I could put a comma, do you want intent, or you want?
Including.
Want to.
We haven't discussed, we haven't discussed this section before.
We, no, we didn't, well.
Lodging did hotels, uh, hotels.
We didn't discuss exactly how many to limit it to. I think that was also something else we had discussed in the loop, in, in, in the aftermath of input from the public on that. What about, I think Hampton Inn was the word used, wasn't it? We talked about Hampton Inn, what if Hampton Inn wants to go in, well, it could came with five thousand.
Five thousand square feet.
But I'm not sure five thousand square feet's much of a lodging facility. It's only a bed and breakfast, as Marty said.
You could get one of twelve rooms of five thousand square.
But I said it applies to every, everything, you don't have, you don't have.
Four rooms or less to design a boarding house.
Again, you don't have the acreage.
For parking lot and buildings.
Right, so, so the question, we have a question, is twelve rooms. Guys, I mean, you can make a two acre lot, especially with the soils down there, you can make a two acre lot worth more than five thousand square feet of park.
You can do it.
And still make sixty to eighty percent coverage, you can do it.
But would the, no more than twelve rooms?
Applied to all lodging, or?
I was thinking twelve rooms to all lodging.
Okay.
That's the boarding houses.
I missed, right there.
But, you know, that's because you, you said you didn't want.
You want chains or?
Well, chains, it's probably, chains could be fifty rooms in the end. And they, and you're right, when you talk about, when you talk about a chain, you're not going in.
They're not going in.
No, it's not gonna be bad.
Five thousand.
They're gonna be about six acres or more to do their, their.
You know, lodging you just approved, I don't even know you need that clarification for a boarding house, boarding house can get in.
Everybody go up.
It wasn't meant for a boarding house, it was meant for all, total, total lodging units.
So maybe you gotta make boarding house a little bit.
I, I would wonder if boarding houses are not an anachronism at this point. The only time we ever have gotten pressure from boarding houses, quite frankly, has been from Kennebunkport with lodging facilities there who have been looking for putting up their, their help.
Exchange students or exchange overseas students.
But a boarding house, as we have it defined, is that the owner has to live in the house. So that's why they have not used Four Fathers in the past, if you recall, there was somebody, well, you don't, because you didn't know in my day. Uh, but there was some, there was one of, one of the large motels, one of the large motels, and, and, and Kennebunkport wanted to use Four Fathers for a boarding house, and the problem was that you had to have somebody on site, one of the owners had to live on site. And that's, that's your definition right now.
Daniel's hands up, good, Dan.
Yeah, just great question, you know, you say lodging including boarding houses, but when you look at the definitions pertinent to this, you say excluding, but excluding boarding houses.
That's why I include boarding houses, because they're excluded from lodging. That makes sense.
It's a separate definition. But just.
Should say lodging and boarding house.
Yeah, they, these definitions are for the TC, I have for, for the TCD district.
No, the definitions for the whole woodings.
Well, then why does it say definition pertinent to the TCD district?
Pertinent to it, but not attached to it, it's gonna be in the definitions section like it always has been in zoning ones. I just pulled them out, because the last time we went through this in public here, in the public workshop, we were having confusion of what is what? What's a, what's a commercial service? What's a lodging facility?
I thought you were adding.
No, I'm not adding.
Definition is just that.
No, these are ones these guys have already approved, or have already gone over before. That's why they have underlines and so forth, is because they've already chewed on some of these already. It's part of the DB one, DB two process. Okay, so I, I think we have all the uses, so, all right, so I get rid of the twelve rooms, is that it, or is that?
Well, you can make that, and lodging and boarding houses. You need it, didn't you?
I don't know that we're, we wanna arbitrarily limit it to twelve.
Yeah, right, you.
Yeah.
Then you'd have to add boarding houses as another permitted use, right? Because they're.
Put it in.
It's a separate.
Let's put it this way, you could turn out, it's, you're on the grain, uh, the, the grain, that could turn out, become a boarding house.
Well, let me ask you two, what boarding houses?
Why throw it out?
Those are anachronism? Very few people stop it and say a boarding house.
Many people stay at boarding houses.
But the way the economy's rolling, it could be an anachronistic thing.
Yeah. Can't change.
Can't argue with that, John, it stays in.
Couldn't, sir, that's what the law say. What's good for my eyes.
Okay, so you can scratch fourteen right out of here. Okay, y'all, y'all agree that we put that as conditions, we put it in anywhere.
What's that?
Non-residential institutional uses, including educational, well, it's just philanthropic, fraternal or social institution.
Don't we like that?
It's just the company needs to be conditional. That's a pretty big range. All for five, well, remember, you could have a school of five thousand square foot buildings, that would, if you find a land to go up to somewhere.
We have the, uh, Howard was right down the area, educational.
Well, see, that was the thing, that, that was another thing that, uh, they, they had been supposed to remember for Four Fathers was a school. That could actually help the businesses in the area, too. Well, it was a monosorted school, if you remember, I brought that to you.
Yeah, but turn out, the only way they were told, they had to go back to zoning change.
Well, we had to do the zoning change, so here we are. We're doing that, so schools, are they allowing the school to five thousand square feet?
No.
But maybe as a conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my thought, I don't know how many others do this, anybody?
You need to broaden the point, well, it's conditional, but it's still five thousand square feet.
Yeah, still five thousand square feet, but I think some of those uses are, you know, be bad. Well, if you want me to put schools in the area, institu-, well, I, I did, I actually, I beat you to it, I already got it in there.
Okay.
That's a big broad term, non-residential institutional uses, I better, I better.
Help create a wording.
Well, I use the definitions we've got, and this is an old, this is an old, actually, I think this is the first one we ever had. Um, it would be schools, commercial schools, the question is, you want commercial schools, driving academies and so forth? Okay. Yeah, schools, and, uh, so it would be schools and clubs, um, that's what it would be, schools and clubs.
And churches, churches, uh.
Church, uh, they proceed from over Kennebunkport, because they're not taxable.
I'm not getting your view when the license comes.
Why? But. The church ain't gonna be able to sustain that side of the.
I'll look right across the street, and it's.
Okay.
No.
And that's in seven.
That's right.
But as I said, keep it over Kennebunk.
Keep it right there.
We're not gonna move on to eight point two, point three.
I did, I had a question on that.
It's just a quick comment, or you?
Yes, just a quick, quick, quick comment question.
Yeah.
Um, in the, the heading, then you take on upon the court, all uses with public water or sewer, and then all uses without public water, what's the?
Standard?
Yeah, what's the, the?
About sewer?
Different, yeah, why wasn't sewer included, or do they need, in all uses with public water or sewer, which event, the end?
I think the issue is separation between the set of fuel and the well, and that's why it's water or sewer. The limiting factor's gonna be having.
One or the other.
Right on.
Well, next question.
Well, sewer is better than the water, but.
Next question is, where does public water run along?
Up to a golf course, I think. That's it.
I'm not sure to, or coming out of the court, that's why I tried to ask the question.
Doesn't run up Block County, but this is planning for a future, if they decide to extend the sewer, or the water line, or the sewer line up that way, and Kennebunk, remember, there's another player on the other side of the road here. Now, they haven't made any moves yet, but they're waiting to see what we do, and if they decide to follow suit and maybe intensify even more, and they decide to extend sewer, certainly they would want any, any, any of these properties to tie in, they'd love to have that, so.
Where does existing sewer stop and start?
Competes.
Competes with what?
If they're developing their business district, why would they wanna set sewer up?
Sewer wants to amortize their investments, they want as many users as they can get, they, they don't care about this rivalry, this, this municipal rivalry for business.
Sewer stops.
Quite clear, it's one of them, I think.
It's right there.
Boys.
Yeah, I have another, another question on the chart, where we have a minimum lot frontage of a hundred feet in both categories, and we do a minimum lot width of a hundred feet. Yeah, it doesn't, that is fair, I mean, if you meet, if you meet one, you meet the other.
No.
Wow, how could you not?
Because you have your frontage of a hundred, you could go down to fifty.
Well, you can go down that trend, but in the middle of the lot, it might.
And this is saying, don't do that. We don't want spaghetti lots like that, we want a lot that's usable. That's gonna, you have to be a four hundred foot wide lot, I mean, four hundred foot long lot.
Don't we, don't we have a lot that's only got a few feet out on, uh, yeah, Lot Cabin Road?
Yeah, it's in a state lot.
There's nothing we can do about that.
It's in a state lot. That's why we put it in state lots for those things.
You have a?
How wide is Linda's lot on Lot Cabin?
That's where the entrance is.
I don't know.
That's the address, that's also where the fire, that's the fire address, the nine one one address is located.
Nine one one address is where?
Is on Lot Cabin.
You have a Four Fathers, correct?
Correct.
Still.
But how, how wide is that lot? A hundred feet?
No.
It stretches across.
No, it's, it's about maybe thirty, forty feet.
Fifty.
Might be fifty, I don't know, it doesn't say it there.
So what's coming about minimum lot width? You've got a section of rural lot that on the, on the, on the road, I mean, I. You've got a section of her lot that on the, on the, I mean, on the block cabin road, it's less than a hundred feet.
Yeah.
So she can't use that?
No, it's already there. It exists in the lot in record, this is for new lots.
Oh, but, no.
It's okay. It happens to me all the time. Well, that won't work, oh, that's right, it's existed.
Comment about the chart. If you're going to eliminate maximum accessory building height than the previous one that says maximum principal building height, I suggest you eliminate the word principal, because then that would be the only building.
That's a good point, thank you.
Your like all.
Yes. So before we go much further into this chart, I would wanna check with everybody. We were shooting for.
We're all over time.
Already overtime, so unless I hear a motion to continue.
Think I'm on to what you said.
No, we don't.
No. I'd like to get out the plans report.
Yeah, so we'll hold off, we'll come back this next meeting sometime in the future. Hopefully when the chair is here, so I cheer. You did fine, John. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to plans report.
This is gateway, are you not doing gateway at all?
No. Gateway's the way. I just think we have to get through this, all this first, before starting gateway. I thought we were. Okay. I had to go home, we have to, I want to get gateway, but it'll be okay if the R left it. And then we wait for the complaint committee to come up with what they wanna do with the other, the R one, two and three, and then tackle the R four. So I'd like to get, we saw a lot to do with performance standards, we have to do a lot of that. But that's gonna nasty work.
We'll get it done by town meeting.
We will get it done by town meeting, period. I've written a lot of this, but we've got, I give that to you, but I wanna get this district done. All right? So enough of that, the report. All quiet, so I'm listening from, listen next to us. Basically, we, things have been somewhat quiet, where do we stand? Our friends at, those are some issues. The Dubois case before the law court will be heard on September tenth, I believe, up in Bangor. That is before the Supreme Court, so what happens out of that, we'll know fairly soon, fairly quickly after that. Let's see, other issues, Kate's Barn. I think I reported to you that Kate's Barn, the Butter Barn, has a stop work order on it. It's not an official stop work order, they just stopped work because the foundation was not constructed to the standards that were specified on the plans. And there is a, there seems to be an elevational problem also. And I talked to Chris today, and that elevational issue is, it's about seven inches higher than what was approved as first floor elevation. And so my question to the board is, do you wanna review that, or do you want staff to take that as a diminutive change issue?
Seven inches?
Seven inches, it's gonna be seven inches more revealed concrete than what was proposed.
That's a compliment?
That's a compliment.
You said Butter Barn had a.
Yeah, when I say the Butter Barn, that includes the Hay, the Hay Barn hasn't even been poured yet, so that, that.
That's the one further up the hill?
That's the one that just approved this cas spring, that's the Cow Barn and the issue there. And I've been trying to keep them, I don't care where the first floor elevation is as much, as long as it is a feet up in the air. My issue is, as I expressed to Chris, is I want the grade done to the tenth, as done on the V H two M plan, because all of that runoff and that stormwater management system there is critical, given the slopes in that area. It's gotta, it's gotta perform exactly as designed, and the inward elevations have to be set to the tenth, as they're shown on the plans. Having the barn a little higher is okay, we can work with that. If it was lower, we have a problem.
Now, the flood.
Yeah, they'd have to grade up, they would have to lower that and change all the elevations there, or else they'd have to grade up against the siding. Luckily, it's higher, so question to me from the board is, do you want me to handle this? Is the diminutive change held by staff, or do you want this to appear before you for consideration?
I think staff can handle it.
He'll change, where else?
A little more, it's he'll change, but it is.
I'll make a motion to that effect, that staff can handle this with the diminutive.
So I can take your discretion, one favor? And you both?
I'm actually recusing myself from voting, I'm not sure I heard you make a motion.
Oh, that's a good. I'll make the motion.
I'm not a voter.
Such a great motion, what he said.
We draw that motion and.
Just switch names.
Okay.
Same motion, but switch names.
Roger, wanna make the motion?
Make the motion, and let staff handle the issue of the Cow Barn and Kate's Barn.
Okay.
Second reading?
Okay, are you all in favor?
Yeah.
We close to abstaining, okay.
Moving on, next issue, I have not heard from AIM yet, but don't forget we have a sidewalk that's coming up next week, okay?
No, we can say.
That's it?
We're getting Saturday.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
We did, we said it was the. Twenty fourth. Twenty eighth. Twenty eighth.
What time?
So six o'clock. Okay, all right, my mistake. I want to make sure that.
Look at the minutes of the meeting that I discussed that.
I have all the money in it. But I have not received anything yet from them.
Yeah, it's two weeks from time on here.
Yeah, two weeks.
Just prior to regular meetings.
Any progress on seasonal cottage?
Seasonal cottage, yeah, seasonal cottage is getting ready to start breaking ground. They are still negotiating with the town on the C E A, so I'm gonna have to, have to come to a final agreement and sign that C E A. Are you guys all set on the C E A?
We haven't seen it.
Okay, yeah, they probably won't get anything completely squared away until the C E A is completed. So you, you didn't guys discuss? That's why they're not going to meet Monday. Okay. Okay, well, it'll be coming, I think they're still hammering it out a little bit between attorneys at this point.
You said that is what?
Hammering it out between attorneys.
What is it, C E A?
C E A, that's regarding the T I F, the credit enhancement agreement, between the town and Joe, on the, basically the agreement on how T I F funds are to be returned to them, and then all the terms of that agreement. That's basically at the town meeting, the townspeople gave the selectmen the authority to be able to negotiate them in best interest of the town. So that's what they're doing right now, and actually our attorney Shannon is handling all that right now. She can't get anybody really better than her, frankly, she's the leader of this state, so she has good hands. In terms of still doing construction, they need to go. I mean, I've got a return of another phone call from Turek. Like, they're ready to start, they're mobilizing people, they're getting ready to start breaking ground and start getting going. It will be an aggressive schedule for them to meet in order to meet the provisional terms of the C E A. And also, they're gonna owe me money, because regardless of all this, they still have a performance, performance assurance they have to file with us. I will probably do it as a, with the board's permission, I assume you don't have a problem for there is a tri-party agreement, the bank holds money.
So you've done all the other?
I've got, no, I've still got escrows and I have two letters of credit still. But, you know, I prefer the tri-party, it's more paperwork for me, but I don't have to hold the money, we don't have to do ten ninety nines, and the banks don't give us.
Towns don't bank.
That's exactly it. You know, we don't wanna be a bank, we don't wanna be holding that money. So, and it makes them less nervous first, not to hold it, so. But they still owe me more than the first phase, which I have yet, as you recall, and probably don't recall, but you left it to staff to come up with exactly what that amount is going to be, based on what's their first phase is. Remember, they have, they only can go so many phases, like if it's two phases, they can't get to the orange phase until they open up the road going through to Hidden Meadows, so we need the second means of egress. They got a lot of emphasis on should build, you know, before they can get that orange phase going.
Yeah, well, the question was, they weren't sure what phase they were gonna start first.
That's right, and that's because they were basically doing it on.
Whether between clubhouse or not.
Yeah, well, that's what, they have to show me is what phase are we talking about, and then I wanna see the cost estimates on that, and I wanna get the performance assurance on that, because that doesn't go away. In order to C D A agreement and a T I F agreement with them, that bond's not go away.
And also too, isn't that part of the, with the turning lane and then straightening out that corner?
They have to do that too, and that's, actually, that was included in the T I F agreement. I mean, some of those T I F money is gonna be reversing that.
Rule one?
On rule one, and they've got, there's a lot of work to be done on that, they have to do some blasting. They need to get going into the ground before the frost flies. They got a lot of blasting to do, they need to start doing it. I think they're doing the pre-melt blast survey, I haven't heard yet, but I think they're getting ready to do one thing, do some surveys, so. I gotta get through, okay, go.
You catch warmer the further down you blast.
Yeah, right. That's what I.
Do that until.
Don't tell them that.
Do that everywhere.
Yeah, but you see, with the water, turn on everything else, they do the ledge, it'll start to crack by itself, is it a free?
I also have another project, another issue coming up, which is a bit sticky. Bringing to the planning board, I think I'm gonna have to bring this to you. I have a subdivision, excuse me, that was approved by this board in nineteen eighty eight called Laura Lane.
Laura?
Laura Lane off of North Skilens Road, it is a private way. It has currently seven units on it. They want to extend the road and put in an eighth unit for a child, you know, it's another. This is not a subdivision, because it is a conveyance to a child, so it's not subdivision, but the issue isn't that, the issue is the road. Because as you probably know, there's a, you have that little thing in our private ways that say when you extend a road, when you go eight, eight units or more, you have to pave the whole road. This is gonna be the eighth unit, so I think we have an issue there, they disagree with us on that. Also, the contingencies and, actually, the conditions of approval on the signed map also say that they are to extend the road, they are also to eliminate the existing cul-de-sac, and wherever the extension is, they're supposed to put that cul-de-sac there.
What's the width?
A cul-de-sac?
No, eighty eight, width is the road then, and the width today.
Uh, good question.
If my memory serves correctly, I think that was one of the first where they had that subdivision issue with the road. They had a problem with the road back then, eighty eight. And I don't know if, I don't think it met standards back then, so probably won't be it now.
Yeah, there's multiple issues here, remember one, also, just in case you didn't know, that private ways, according to the street ordinance, town's current street ordinance, no private way can have more than eight lots on it. And any road with more than eight lots has to be a town road.
So it's still a private way?
We have a problem with that, I mean, for. Yeah, this is one of those things where we're gonna have to, see, we have a lot of work to do, we still have to fix other ordinances too, not just this one. That's a problem.
It's just an extended driveway.
But yeah, this, this one is an issue where you have, the ordinance says they gotta pave, they're saying it's not an extension of the road, it's actually a new road off of the cul-de-sac, and they wanna make their pitch to the board. I'm not gonna deal with it as staff, staff review committees, unless the sent to you, it's coming your way.
So you wrote off a private way?
Well, it's a private way off of a private way.
That's a no way. Can I call the loophole?
Well, actually, you can have private ways off of private ways, but usually not at the end of that, of existing private way. Beyond a perpendicular to it, okay, but it's still the issue on, you know, it's based on the total number of lots that are served. And so it's gonna be like a Bass Lane issue.
We had a big discussion on it.
We had a big discussion on this, and so they wanna, they wanna basically come and make their pitch to the board. So that'll probably be coming next week, or next, next meeting. And so already I put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lord Boys under construction?
Lord Boys is under construction right now. Mark Walsh is preparing his application to come in for renewal of his pit. So I've met with him on that, so he's gonna do a renewal on that, he's gonna have a number of waivers on there, he hasn't really, he hasn't expanded at all, he's like sergeants, he hasn't expanded out, but he's just gone down, that's it, so. I have to walk up with him, and think, guys, we're gonna have a sidewalk, and I'd like to get that before the snow flies, obviously. So I'm pushing him to get that done. And that's about it, a whole bunch of other possibles, but nothing, nothing really solid so far. I probably will have a couple more private way exemptions coming my way, two, I wouldn't imagine, that won't be coming our way. So get a lot of business on the exceptions. Other than that, there are no other real issues that are going on. Complaint committee will be meeting, and they're, they kind of worked through some of the route one stuff there. They're still examining the issue of the rural overlay district, and they're still debating what the overlay, whether that's gonna be overlay district, or whether it's gonna be standards in the R one and two and three regarding agricultural uses and maybe some other uses. They still don't have firm, they haven't framed that up yet, but they're still working on it, so.
And also looking at possibly combining R two, R three, making that one, or looking into what that is.
Where?
Instead of an R two, and an R three, and an R four, maybe they can get rid of an R three, there's been some discussion on that, whether it can be R two, and R three, or become R three, and R four, makes me.
I think I have two areas, growth area and no growth area.
There's not much difference between the two when you go through the tape.
R two and R three are pretty close, it's just a couple of uses.
Yeah, just a couple of uses, so.
I think it was to accommodate a couple gravel pits and.
Yeah, spread it out.
That's what it was. So that's where we stand on there, I think if the planning board is welcome to join complaint committee, at some point, when they get, I think when the complaint committee gets along a little further, we're gonna wanna have a joint meeting. But you folks will probably wanna make some input on some of these decisions that are gonna be making in the R one, two and three. Because, you know, they're, they're gonna set the general standards, and then it's gonna go to the board to implement it. And you can see what we've been doing, how we've been struggling with townhouse corner, which in the, in the, in the, in the scheme of things, is a very, very, very small district. You can see how much struggle we've had with this, and some of the, some of the things that they're gonna be there, you're gonna wanna have some input on in order to help, to have a very clear idea of where they're going, and to make sure that you can implement the new standards as quickly as possible. That's it for the planning.
Would you make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, second?
I'll second. Anyway, you had a question, you've had somebody back here.
Just one quick thing, before the board adjourns, the planner made mention that one of the steps you needed to take to determine whether or not you were gonna put John Club Lane back into that district. Would that be something that you would be putting on next agenda, where you didn't make it?
Should be next time, yeah.
Should be, I mean, I don't wanna.
Put it on.
You don't wanna come.
You know, see, we can drag this out to adjourn if you want.
I don't care, I just would like to know when it was, would be put on the agenda. Yeah. If it was at the next meeting, or if it needs to be the following meeting, I don't know when you're going to get back to working on that part of the plan.
The board think there was discussion next time?
Yeah, you're only gonna have the Laura Lane application prior to, I think that's all you're gonna have.
The sidewalk?
Yeah, the sidewalk and Laura Lane application, I think are the only ones that you're gonna have prior to. So.
Yeah, we just got barged down.
No, it's, I just, where it was drawn up, and that was one of the steps you needed to take, and you weren't able to make the decision, I wanna make sure it's gonna be put on your agenda next time at all. Okay, thank you so much, thank you.
All, all in favor, I think.
We think we got a second.
Yeah, I never took a vote. Did you buy your vote?
I would never vote to that motion.
Because that's, he's pushing for that, I mean, he's already got what he needs.
Well, I'd like a discussion next time.
Oh, yeah, we do that.